One thirty-two, is there a motion to return to our meeting? It's, let me make a motion.
Okay.
Second one. All in better, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion. Right. I pass this out. It's quite important. You want this out? It should have prompted someone in this room. Anyway. Yesterday. We got into a certain discussion, so to recap. There was some confusion about, actually, juvenile. And so Hannah is here to talk about who you report to and what. So we can all, this bill of civics, for all of us, real quick. And, come on up.
So I watched this very briefly, kind of started your driving discussion yesterday, and just wanted to kind of lay it out, both Erin and Cody are correct. I am financially a BOCC department. I fall under the BOCC, and all of our budgets were a BOCC department. Operationally, I'm not. The statute is very clear. I report to the judge, the judge, but however, the judge's only responsibilities are to set salaries for myself and my staff, and to hire and fire the director. That is it. All operational decisions are left to me by the statute. So, all of my employees are county employees, we follow the handbook. You know, obviously, the BOCC funds me, does all of my contracts, does all those things. We would never, you know, try and step out of that, or do anything that's not, you know, in line with the handbook, but operationally, I don't report to the BOCC. But I am a BOCC department, if that makes sense, so.
And you say judge, is it the judge out here, or the presiding?
It is the chief judge of the juvenile division. So not Judge Ogden, but Judge Abbott. She doesn't, she is technically the presiding judge of the juvenile division, but she doesn't like to use the term presiding, because then that gets conflicting with Judge Ogden. So she, sometimes, we've used it as the chief judge, kind of swapped out, but she just goes by the chief judge of the juvenile division.
Okay.
I don't remember the specific conversations heard, the juvenile topic. Do you?
It was the action to add the department head to specify for those who do not report to an elected official.
And I've always, again, this is solely Hannah Whip's interpretation, I've always interpreted the handbook and understood it when it said elected official. I have an elected official, it's just not a county elected official. So I, we've always just kind of interpreted that as, it is the discretion of my elected official, which would be the judge, but that's not a county employee, so obviously statute leaves that to me. But again, I, we follow the handbook, I don't have any necessary, you know, huge uproars about any of that, but we, we are county employees, we follow the handbook. But as far as operationally, that's correct, that I don't report to the BOCC. I don't put my budget through them, I don't go to them for operational requests and needs. Statute says that I am represented by the district attorney's office. If there's any legal things like that, so we go through the ADA for legal requests and things of that nature, but operationally, it's neither the judge or the BOCC, it's me, set by statute.
Not only your contract.
And all the contracts.
Correct, all contracts are BOCC on behalf of the juvenile bureau. They handle all my funding, all of them.
And, one more question for me, do you have your own ACHR?
I do.
Your own AHR stuff, you get to make it.
Correct.
But the judge says.
Correct.
Is anybody, Erin, or Cody, or Tracy?
I thought Erin, I thought we all had a conversation yesterday.
I wasn't confused by it at all.
Oh, I just.
We discussed.
Well, she made the trip down here, and I wanted to give her, you know.
Sure, I just want to make sure you guys understood, Jessica called me briefly this morning, and just wanted to clarify, to make sure she understood how that worked. And I know ten A is kind of the Wild West when it comes to statutes versus what you guys are used to, so I just want to make sure you guys knew all the pieces.
Yeah, if there was any confusion, I mean, you came down here on your own volition.
Sure.
And so I appreciate you standing up.
Absolutely.
If everybody had any questions.
I appreciate it.
Yep. Okay, thanks for coming down. And find my email.
I will, and I'll go see her when I get back.
While you're back.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm here. Okay, yeah, I'm here.
All right. There was also discussion, and I distributed these out, on the county manager having a org chart, org chart, thank you. So we have it, my question, and there was, I thought, do I recall correctly, that there was some discussion that maybe it should be in the handbook? I think it's going to be in the budget.
It is. There's org charts in it.
In the budget. So. I'm not sure, my personal opinion is, I'm not sure that handbooks are organization. If you all, wisdom group believes that org charts would be useful in the employee handbook, and I'm certainly open to discussing that. Does anybody feel like it needs to be in the handbook?
It necessarily needs to be, but I thought it would be helpful for a new employee, just to get a kind of a view of everything within the calendar.
It may be a way to hyperlink something like that.
Yeah.
We could, we could throw that in, we'll, we'll get to that. Okay, yesterday, we were on page seven, was it? Yeah. And we ran these.
On page nine.
Oh, page nine.
Oh, is it because of the thing that I wanted to know? Okay.
So is it seven, and ten is our turn, or the address? Eight twenty-two, or?
It's seven and Erin's, and the DA's version, and then nine is.
What section are we on?
We're still under the policy against drug testing.
So we've got, we're through page eight? No, did anybody have any issues with page eight? And then five twenty, I think. There's no other issue. Anyone? Anyone? I'm gonna assume no one has any problems. So, that would be one of the cleanest pages. Get there, correct. All right, page nine, if you go to the five twenty-two version, excuse me, the eight twenty-two version.
The one on the left is. The one on the right is Erin's, this is, so wait, the one on the right is, I mean, Lisa, sorry. The one on the right is Lisa, and then the one on the left, it's that other one that we were working with yesterday. And then Erin's, I can pull up, or I can't see if I can pull up.
Let's go to page nine, five twenty-two. My page nine was.
I don't know why the paging got, but I can track where you're at.
I, I think that maybe on, I think maybe this one. Uh huh, might be, did you also save Erin's that I sent you?
Yes, but it's, it's a different document, I have it, there's a third document.
Why it's changed to green, I honestly have no. Instead of red. Okay. All right, go ahead.
Okay.
I just want to make sure it's the same page.
And on the left are, some of those things on the red are just my suggestions that were in that document I sent to you, I think. So. Those can, cannot be worried about.
So basically, the medical exams, the condition of employment, if necessary, to surpass the medical evaluation and/or to have a county selected physician under conditional law, blah, blah, blah.
That county selected is simply just adding a dash between county and selected. County selected physician, sort of the grammar of that.
And all that. I weren't reading glasses, but it says, you know, exactly expensive.
And I thought that last, and it seemed like strange wording to me, maybe it makes sense to you all, the expenses shall be provided by the county, I thought. I think we're just trying to say they're gonna pay for it, so seems like it would be easier to say something.
Question with regard to that, maybe this isn't the forum for it. But I'll use you as an example, if there are any HR departments that are acting pretty much independently of the county HR, other than maybe the initial orientation. Are you paying for drug tests for your folks?
No, it's just the county HR. The only thing the county HR does with my department is drug tests, whether it's pre-employment or for cause, and workers' comp.
Oh, so workers' comp, okay. I'm just wondering if there are, if there are any other completely independent HR departments, should the county be putting the bill for it?
I don't know that they call them completely independent HR. Like, if I, if I have an HR department, but like, those similar functions, like, other departments may not utilize Karen's department necessarily for anything outside of those two things, but they may not call it HR, they may call it some department.
We do have a department that has their own HR, and we do not pay for their testing. So they're pretty much self, at Jordan now.
What department are you talking about?
Court clerk.
Court clerk. Okay. Court clerk, okay, just thing for this.
And the county clerk.
Why are we doing it one way for the court clerk, and?
Well, the county clerk, they do their own also.
I understand.
Yeah. I'm not sure.
Still, still begs the question.
Well, if the money's on the same thought, I'm not sure, do you know?
You, the county clerk does what then?
They, they do their own drug testing. For pre-hires.
With the court clerk, or the county clerk?
It's still not the responsibility of the new hire.
No, it's not the responsibility. I'm talking, so if there are other departments that are paying for their own drug tests, then
Yeah, there is.
it should be worded different. Maybe I'm, I think that a lot of times, at least even I'm guilty, I think we throw health and safety and HR together, and I see them as two different things. And because we do most of our own HR functions, but we rely on the health and safety side, which is where I would consider the drug tests go through. I mean, it's just weird, because she happens to oversee both, but so, I mean, maybe that's the nuance that, you see what I'm saying? I mean, because we rely on our own, we've got our own HR people that hire and fire, because I mean, we wouldn't put that load on Karen or her HR side team, but again, during drug tests, they go to the health and safety side. So I don't know, I mean, I, maybe that's kind of a weird nuance, and, but so, I don't know.
So either way, wouldn't it be correct to say that it's paid by the county?
Right. It doesn't matter which county division pays for it out of their bucket of money, or how. It's still being paid.
That's the purpose of this, is just letting people know, hey, you have more for the county.
What about for, like, like reserves, is this, does this specifically apply to full-time? And the reason I said is because, like, for our volunteers, for example, whatever, which has been years at this point, since we ran a reserve academy, but back when we did reserve academies, I mean, we, we put the onus of financial responsibility on them entirely. They've got all their own equipment, their own guns, their own belts, their own uniforms, they paid for their own psychological testing, their own drug screen testing.
They're already paying for everything. I mean, it's, to me, it's about onboarding, it's about, they're gonna be county, I mean, I think a drug test, especially, and even for I think it protects the county from liability, if we have drug tests with, as far as who pays for it.
We, we told them where to go, but they just paid, they just covered it, because they're not really employees, but they are, you know, I don't know, it's.
They're volunteer, are they not? They're volunteer.
That they are.
So they're volunteer, they're not gonna be considered.
But that's, and that's what I would, that's what I'm saying, we don't, we don't correct their time and place.
Right.
So.
And I think we might, I mean, we need to have something later on addressed, to talk about the difference between employee and a volunteer. When we get to classifications, you might.
Yeah, well, the reason I said that, well, the reason I said that they kind of are, they kind of aren't, because, for example, using this, using this particular example, back when we had the jail, you know, there were times where, I mean, you probably remember we would pay them to set up the metal detectors, a wage, so they were, that's why I say they're kind of employees, but they're kind of not, so I don't, probably maybe not for this discussion, I, I just, if, any of that we ever do run a future academy, I just didn't know, I want to make sure we do it right. If that's something we need, if we need to eat the cost of thirty-dollar, yep, drug test, then that seems pretty simple.
I'm not as torn up about who pays for it as about it occurring, so, you know, the payment thing, this is just, I, like I said, I would consider them volunteers. They're paying for all their own equipment, they're doing this, they're volunteer force, and I don't know, if you're making them pay for everything else, since they would pay for the drug test as well.
Yeah, we, we don't have any reserve control.
And if you have those folks are paying for everything, and they be able to start, they have to show up with that drug test paid for, and the results are handed.
Okay.
That's all we can do.
Yeah, so maybe, I think, and I, I recognize what you were saying, but if you're, so you just say medical exam and drug test shall be borne by the county.
Born, paid, whatever. It's keep it simple. County, 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 county will cover the costs. Okay, well, just.
Drug test slash.
So.
B. I can, today, I can fix it.
Now, I will also tell you, going through this policy, this is the only place where any drug testing provision appears, so take that into mind, consideration when you go through here, that if you have a drug test for cause, goes not. One in this form, from an ICA. And it needs to be added, that I told, just wanted to let you know that.
Well, in the current handbook, there's a whole section about drug testing, are you saying?
This ICA provision did not put it, whatever, whatever from the old, the other version, like that, needs to be pulled over. But I didn't touch it or attempt it with the title, because I don't, it was very wordy, and I want you guys to make that decision on what comes in and what comes out. So I didn't attempt it. But this is just, this is just for new hires, and I mean, the drug testing for cause can be in the, you know, discipline termination section, or you did.
What, what should you, do you guys just say?
That's in the, that's at the beginning of the policy, this is just talking about new hires, yeah.
So it's clear, I've not seen, I mean, it's clear that this is in new hire section?
Well.
Or does that need to say medical exams for new hire?
Probably. Or you can, or you can add it here, you can add a new paragraph here that says, says if there's ever an accident or for cause, the county has a reserve directive.
Yeah.
And have employees subject to a drug test.
Pre-employment medical exams.
And just say applicant, job applicant.
He's talking about like, like, I guess for our index purposes, that name title, so that people don't get confused. Maybe just say medical exam, and applicant employee. Medical exam.
Cause I missed that. There can be. So, I mean, this section is intended specifically for pre-employment medical and drug screenings? Well, and I haven't seen it, if it's, if it's laid out such that this, yeah, you have pre-employment, and you got all this stuff, then it would be clear that this is a section in pre-employment, and you would need to do that, I'm just so honest with you.
Um, it's employment policies, this is like the.
Like I said, the.
Because you don't want somebody reading this, and it's a medical exam, it stands for a for cause, it's addressed later, but they think this is actually the law.
Right, and I am only pointing out that as you go through this policy, the for cause, this is just, this is what this this is what the ICA version is, everything that's in my version that's in black is the ICA version. Anything in the red is, or stricken out in red is my changes to the ICA. So this is the base model, basically.
So, so based, based on the layout there, would it be best medical exams, and then under it, you have a subsection for pre-employment, and you have this language that's on there, and then you have another subsection that is for cause?
Right, right, you can, like, like I said, you can leave this right here, and later on, when it goes to the, in the further back in this manual, when it talks about term, and you can add it, the, the testing for cause there, or you can add another paragraph here. It's up to you.
I would think, and I'm not sure where it, but fifty-sixth page, but we may circle back to this, I'll go to the paper.
Yeah, of course. Right, that's why I didn't put it.
But I want to be able to hyperlink this, so people can find it more easily, and I would think any headers, medical, pre-employment, and it's medical exams for cause.
Well, it's cause, or, you know, we'll.
Yeah, it may make sense to do those later, when you're talking about negative actions, you know, for negative performance or something, so I think here, you just put pre-employment medical exams, and it's clear, and so when somebody's looking at the table of contents, it's pre-employment, oh, that doesn't apply to me, because I'm already.
And, and really, at the end, it's mostly just drug testing, right? We have post, post, post-employment is drug testing, I don't think we have to go to do medical exams after.
So. We need a motion for, to change the header for pre-employment medical exam. And then, the final paragraph, read medical, medical test, shall be paid by the county.
I would move to change the header to pre-employment medical examinations, and then to adopt the paid language on the last sentence, and also to make a couple edits that are on my version. The green is.
I know, I'm gonna go see if I can.
And so question for the DA's office, so, if we add in, so if they fail to appear or do not satisfactorily satisfactorily complete a medical examination, would we want that language in there? So it's not just if you don't show up, because it's also if you don't pass, it's gonna pass.
If you don't show up, you don't pass.
Right, but if, if there's nothing in there now, that says that you failed it, or you don't pass it, or complete it, that you'll be disqualified.
Well, that's, that depends on, and we're gonna get, be getting into the medical marijuana's legal information. Because, you know, it's legal in the state of Oklahoma, but it's not legal for somebody who say that's a a driver out in District Three in a big dozer, he's not gonna be able to be offered that employment if he tests positive for medical marijuana. But somebody in the court clerk's office, that's just gonna be, will not, will fail that medical, that test, because they will test positive for medical marijuana, will have a medical marijuana card, and if we deny their employment, we could be subjecting ourselves to lawsuits. So we'll have to be real careful about how we're to, yes, you're on the right track, you can add this kind of language.
Yeah, if we add, I think that person would still satisfactorily complete that, if they're not in a safety sensitive position, and they have according to the current policy.
And they don't fail, so even in my safety sensitive decisions, get their medical marijuana positive, we receive a non-negative from the provider, and it says, if this person is in a safety sensitive position, you may want to review. But it's still not a failure.
Okay, okay, great, so the only, really, the only true failure would be.
Yes, a hard drug. Or, or without marijuana.
Or not showing it.
Or not showing it, yes.
Okay, so I would move to add in this language, as well, as what we discussed.
Well, I think, Paul, you have a motion?
No, no.
That came from Cody, didn't it?
No, Erin was talking about.
Yeah. All right, so you're just admitting.
But, but Erin, your language says satisfactorily completed, it can be argued that taking the test, you satisfactorily completed the test, not that you passed or failed, so. you satisfactorily completed the test, not that you passed or failed, so you may wanna be careful on your language there and say, you know, a conditional offer of employment who fails to appear for, or does not satisfactorily pass, or to say pass, a medical.
They completed it.
Yeah, I think it still covers it.
They have to complete and satisfactorily satisfy the job requirements?
Satisfactorily.
Which would have.
On the physician, and that would be, that would be how you could.
Yeah.
Word it, and would that be okay?
Yeah, I would say completed it, but not.
Yeah, I just think if you just say satisfactorily complete, it might be too broad.
You're gonna say, well, I, I took it, I might have failed it, but I took it, that's how I spectral completed, yeah.
That should prepare, or it is not satisfactorily. Let's say satisfactorily.
There's a statute side of there, what does the statute say? If we reword the statute, we can't do that either. Right, I mean.
Just the authority to allow the drug testing, it doesn't.
Okay.
That's just the statutory authority for, that says we're allowed to drug test and.
Okay.
So in your view, is this too broad?
Um, I think that if, if we wanted to keep, if it does not, uh, satisfactorily fulfill the requirements of the physician, you know, if their drug, I'm trying to get to the point with drug tests, that would leave it wide open for, based on position, do you see what I'm saying, one for that?
You just say satisfactorily passed a medical examination?
Or can you say meet the conditions of the medical examination, or meet the required conditions?
Um, that should, if it does not. Satisfactorily meet the conditions for employment after, uh, yeah, I don't think you complete the examination, does not, not, does not, uh, appear or, or does not report for a medical man, examination or drug test, or fails to meet the requirements of the job, um, they will be disqualified, because that'll cover everything. You know, if you go to a medical exam and you got a guy that's, you know, not physically fit enough to be able to get on, do, do the physical manual labor, that'll cover that, it'll cover the drugs.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so my motion is to change the title to pre-employment medical examinations, um, add the word conducted before by a county selected physician, and add in after fails to appear. So fails to appear for, or fails to meet the requirements of the physician will be disqualified. So an applicant who has received a conditional offer of employment and who fails to appear for, or fails to meet the requirements of the physician will be disqualified from further employment consideration. And then adding in the paid by the county rather than provided.
It's your second.
Okay, so, so you'll, we'll take out the medical examination or drug test part?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Do you have it edited on yours?
I, it's, yeah, you can look back, I was trying to kind of type, uh, read what's there. Let's say what we were saying. I put in the conducted, I mean, and it already had in your, in the law, drug test language. Think I wrote what we were saying, but. An applicant who has received a conditional offer of employment and who fails to appear for, or does not meet specific job requirements during medical examination and on drug test.
Should that be not meet specific medical job requirements?
Instead of during. Does not, or just the requirements of the physician.
Or you could just, instead of during, it could be based upon medical examination and drug test results.
Yes.
Uh, instead of during, but based on the medical examination and drug test results. I think that would be there.
I think if you just say doesn't show up or fails, you're fine, because whenever it comes back, you're gonna say, well, they, they're not in safety sensitive, they tested positive for, for marijuana, they're gonna, marijuana part, so our definition is it doesn't fail, so they ask, I think if you just say doesn't show up or fails.
Um, like I said.
I'd be okay with that, but I'm not a lawyer, so.
Yeah, like, like I said, this is, this is about information to the, the folks that are gonna be reading it, and what information, you know, fails is fine, this is a little bit more wordy, gives you a little bit more specific detail about that, and because they're, then you go to the question, well, what is. Right. We're defining, we're saying this is the constitution.
Yeah, but, but here's the problem.
Right.
Statute and situations are gonna change over time, what fails and what doesn't, so.
Yep.
We can't, we can't predict what that's gonna be, so if we just say fails here, then we didn't always make those adjustments on the back end later, and you don't have to change the stuff.
Sure.
So Erin, are you satisfied with the wording, yes, for your motion that's on, up on the screen?
Hmm, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, do we have a second, please? All right, there's a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Need a pause. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. And then. All right. We're moving on. Nepotism. Are there, is there anyone who has recommendations? I'm gonna change this to those two, Erin.
Um, yeah, in the nepotism section, um, I would move to add or department head after elected official. Um, and then to combine the paragraphs, um, with the word including, rather than having a second paragraph say any person defining basically what the first paragraph is saying.
Say that again.
And what do you see on here on the screen?
Just know you're limiting yourself by adding department head, because it all looks statute.
Because what, say that again?
Your, your department head can be related, it's just the elected official that can't, must touch you. I mean, it's fine, that's fine.
But do you want that?
I'm just saying that you, you're fine, I don't sound about me, you're, that is fine, I'm just saying, the nepotism statute. You're, you're, you're limiting hiring options beyond what the law requires.
Yeah, I still feel like it's an idea.
But, do you want to decide what are.
Yeah, cause. The department head answers to an elected official, so the elected official can still, they're gonna know if they're related or not, and they can make that.
Do you, you understand what I'm saying, though, the nepotism statute?
No, I know.
So, so a, a department head could hire their brother-in-law, or their, you know,
Sure, as long as they're not in the direct.
It's not, it's, but the elected official can't hire their.
Well, there's nothing in this, yeah, there's nothing to prevent that either.
What? There's nothing to prevent what, uh, the official, the statute does.
No.
The department had hired your brother-in-law.
Or supervising an immediate family member.
This is the, this is where the policy decision maybe comes in, it's legally correct, there's nothing wrong with that change, I'm just telling you that the nepotism, the nepotism statute only advise to, to the officials.
And I think here, once again, it would be V O C C department.
Right. No, I don't know.
Any other.
Yeah, yes, we, we talked about, any where, department head, it was a V O C C department.
But it's.
I mean, now, we, we have.
Yeah.
Not.
It wasn't.
Although, you know.
They, they, they are a V O C C department.
Right.
Juvenile is a V O C C department. They have been treated as such for years, both legally and otherwise, they are a department. And it is a V O C C department.
When you're, when you were hired, it touched across the V O C C hiring?
No, it's that.
That's always my question.
It's that group that has a V O C C member.
Well, that's our board, and all they do is make a recommendation, no, it's just solo.
From the, from the.
Judge hiring. From the recommended list, from the board.
Well.
Well, the board, the board is, a member of the board is included.
Okay.
The judge has to review, at least, they do not have to select from.
Okay.
I wasn't on.
Okay.
Statute really, they're required. And the advisor.
I mean, so, just because I don't work in a world of department heads, I'm confused with how it works, so, so in our office, the only person who makes hire and fire ultimate decisions is the sheriff.
Right.
So what would stop somebody else under that from doing that? Like, what would stop the undersheriff for me or somebody else? I mean, like, would I have anybody to hire and fire and change salary and?
Sheriff, this would be the real stuff.
Okay.
So then you can delegate that, the elected official can delegate.
Okay.
But typically, when you talk about lawsuits, yeah, that, uh, looks up to the sheriff.
Okay.
I mean, that's, how I always try to go is like, who's gonna be, who's gonna be the one, sued, when Hannah fires somebody out there, it's not gonna be Hannah, but sued is gonna be the three, four, and county commissioners, that's where I go to as far as, sorry, elected official, what, like, ultimate responsibility, I know you're a hybrid created by statute with this weird thing.
Yeah, that would be a problem.
But in my world.
To me, if Hannah can sign her own contract.
If something happens out of juvenile, that lawsuit comes in in the name of V O C C, and we defend. So.
Which is, which is different, the, the, if something happens in the jail, the trust is sued, now they may also sue the county separately, or together, but they're separate legal entities, if something happens in public defender's office, or you got the commissioners, or the police, or their city, or she, all that. Yeah.
And it's also not the, it's also not the judge out there, juvenile, and if he's making the administrative decisions, he's also not the one who's looking for the lawsuit, he's the, he's the one. The one, so like I said, when I go back to this whole department head thing, you've gotta be clear, but that isn't meaning every department head and every elected officials, you know, each, I'm assuming some of the elected officials are department heads, right, and we have department heads and.
We got fifteen of them.
And, yeah, do you understand, so, like, like I said, gotta be careful with that language. And, and nail that down, and like I said, take it like we are in this individual, each individual section.
So what we're saying, I mean, I think this looks fine, but we're just saying we have to decide, do we want to include department head? As someone who can't hire.
Right, if it's not legally required, I think it's still a policy decision, and it's, uh,
Like, yeah.
It aligns with the current handbook.
If you want to, some manuals have definitions, and if you wanna add a definition section to what you mean by department head? For this particular thing?
Well, I think yesterday, they had said anywhere it said department head, that they would have V O C C in front of.
V O C C, right.
That's right.
Um, but.
But that's not really what we're talking about here.
Well, if you, if you.
If you leave department head in there, then you would need, you need to make that change.
Or you were saying any department, it, nepotism is gonna mean that any department head, all fifteen of your department heads, if they are recommend, I mean, but they're not the ones recommending, I mean, ultimately, who's gonna hire, who has the hiring authority? That department head doesn't have hiring authority, the elected official's the one who makes the offer. They might do the interviews, right, and make the recommendations, but the ultimate per party to hire is the elected official, or is it not, I mean, that's.
Well, 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 that's what I was, we, I was, cause again, in my world, it's always the sheriff that signs the letters. He, he's the one who always promotes, he's the one who terminates.
Right.
He's the one who does the discipline.
He's the one we can sue if things go wrong.
Again, of course, it's at the, it's at the reputation of a, of a group of us that sit around and, and discuss it. Um.
I'm not sure. That's what I'm saying. But like I said, you have still a picture that. I can't do nothing.
I've been.
In my world, it tends to be in the lawsuit.
This is what.
I mean, to me, this is one of those do nothing things in statute, because if Brandy wants to hire her brother-in-law, she can, me too, she can get a sweetheart, it'll be free. It's what's the difference, you know, I mean, she's, I, but, yeah, I mean, you're gonna hire her brother-in-law, and she's gonna hire your sister-in-law, you know, you're good. I mean, that's true.
All right. All right, you know, this down, we have a motion, right, Erin, make a motion. Question is, is there a second, do we wanna make this recommendation to the budget board? Uh, with that wording, you're, of course. Is there a sec?
I think the second part is good, the including but not limited to part, and I just don't feel like I know enough about this department head thing to say what I think about that. I don't know, can I get a half second? I don't, I don't know.
Um.
Are you all?
Well, we can always break them up if you two.
Sure.
Yeah, I have it separately.
That's it.
Are you all not in favor of including department heads?
I'm not for all of them, I feel like.
I'm always for class restriction, personally, I, I mean, I'm always gonna vote on the status of class restriction, that, that's my personal political position and personal position, I'm not a anarchist, but I'm always for class government.
Okay, um, I'll revise my motion.
Well, you're also removing one, because, you know, third degree is kind of far out, what happens if somebody gets hired and they discover, you know, some type of relationship to the third degree? And all of a sudden, you've created liability where statute requires it to be created to.
Okay.
I'm not even sure I know what that means.
Erin has amended her motion.
Yeah.
So, uh, it eliminate or department head separate?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, you can scroll up so I can see the rest of the.
Longer list?
Yeah. So it's basically, it looks like it's the same group of people that's involved in like femla stuff, which L is working, femla work.
The simply, exactly.
Okay.
This is, uh, that was in print, that was in quotes, because that's directly from the statute.
Gotcha, okay.
The third degree definition.
You had, in the first part, quote.
Yeah.
If, if that's the definition, the third degree?
Mm-hmm.
And you included the, the others in that definition, then why would it be not limited to? How would you get beyond the ones in that definition?
I don't understand the question.
Says including but not, any person who is related by blood or marriage within the third degree, including but not limited to, which means there could be more, spouse, child, stepchild, yada, 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 yada. If all of those people are listed, and statute has up to the third degree.
That's, uh, Cody, the, I said, I think, uh, that was the entire quote.
That's the first part.
No, if we added, we're looking at including.
Just the first part, the quote, not the. And.
Yeah.
Oh, the any, the any person who is related by blood or marriage within the third degree, and that is in, that is from the statute, includes but not limited to, the spouse, that's, the spouse, stepchild, all of that's in statute. Let me pull up the statute, or we can put something.
What's crazy, you hire your cousin, so.
Well, I guess it's whatever, I guess it's whatever player will come to somebody. Yeah.
Has it? You hire your cousin.
But this is, that's, that's beyond third degree.
That was stated.
Well, you need to leave it open. Present.
That would say that you say to the third degree, oh, cousin, I'm gonna be like, you're third degree.
Right.
So, we're quoting a statute. Erin, you have edited the statute.
Well, she she can look it up and see what it is right there.
No, I don't think she has.
I'm not judging.
Taking off some of the.
Yeah, she's not, she's not.
She's working.
Yeah.
She's just giving it like the most.
Yeah. Uh, do you wanna?
Cause that is repeated, I mean.
Blood mark.
Related by blood or marriage within third degree, it's like they're twice, one right after the other.
That's where you hire your cousin.
One's not in quotes, one's in.
You hire your cousins.
Your aunt, uncle, aunties or nephews, but your cousins are. They're the fourth. Cousins on?
They're third, three and a half?
Yeah.
Doesn't say anything about. Yeah.
That's why it's not limited to. How about if we just said, within the third degree, which could include spouse, child? Say could include, and then we're not saying includes, but it's not limited to, taking out that little phrase. It could include. Probably includes.
Likely.
It usually includes.
Examples of relatives in my hate, for example.
Yeah, in it, in four eighty-one to four eighty-seven, the only place that I see the third degree, it says, who's related by either blood or marriage within third degree to another executive legislative minister or judicial officer. And such appointment is made, part consideration, by the way, it doesn't mention anything about child, stepchild.
This is just so somebody will know just what third degree is.
Because we can't figure out what third degree is, so.
Yeah.
And I think it's fine if you say third degree, and then you include.
And just leave out that.
Would put, including but not limited to.
But not limited to. You're taking that.
Including, you scroll back to the.
Sure.
Yeah. And I, and I do wanna put that that what's here also in the original.
Yeah, that's, that's active language.
Okay, I will amend my motion to say including and take out but not limited to. And then resuming with a spouse, child, and so on.
Thank you, Erin. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Thank you, everyone. So, we're gonna hyperlink that statute, all right? Moving on to personnel records.
I'm sorry, I got the board in your second thought. Thank you.
All right. We're scrolling, we're scrolling. Let's go back to the, to the personnel records. Are there issues with with the language?
Um, I would like to make a motion to add in the department's H R representative. As the person responsible for maintaining, um, personnel records. In those three places. I mean, I did take out elected official, just because I think this would fall to somebody that's employed by each elected official, but I'm not.
I I, and again, maybe I I, I take, when I see the word elected official, I don't feel like it means that exact person. I feel like it just means that, like, that general umbrella, but maybe I'm reading that incorrectly.
Yeah, and that they're ultimately responsible.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think Tommy Kato's saying it in briefcase, you know what I mean, I mean, but I think it just like somebody in that lineage.
We could say each elected official, H R representative or office.
But if someone don't have an H R office, that's why I'd be.
True. Yeah. But they, they do have, everyone has an H R representative, which I think it makes sense to direct employees who just handle.
Everybody has an H R representative?
Not necessarily.
All elected officials' offices and departments have an H R representative?
It's not, and within the office, then it's the V O C C H R, is my understanding. Like, everybody has someone who does enrollment for new hiring.
You do, but I'm saying that not everybody has one. It's in their office. I think if it said, should I have kept on each elected official?
Elected official's office is what I would, that's what I was, I bet that seems.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wasn't saying the elected official had to have the door with H R stuff to them. Personal possession, that was something.
Um, I will. The elected official's office would be paying for all of this.
That also gets a little soft, too, because like, for instance, like, I keep my own personnel files, other departments don't. And Karen keeps them, but then people who don't use Karen have different ones.
It does.
We've actually been dinged on when people call for employment references. We were told at one time, we were not allowed to give an employment reference, but it had to go through the county clerk, because they were, quote, the, you know, like, position of record. The keeper of the record, that we were to lack to do that, so I, we better be specific on what we're doing with that. So, whoever's doing that is who's going to give the employment reference, that's who's going to be doing unemployment, that's, I mean, it goes a lot, there's a lot with that, other than just the personnel reference.
What do you mean you got dinged?
We were told specifically that we were not allowed to give an employment reference. Now, we've done it since, but at one time, we were told that it could only be the county clerk.
Yeah, they were, there was about seven, eight years ago.
The county clerk, he does that.
Yeah, yeah.
What's the important thing here that the person needs to know? It's just that.
Where their workers are gonna be.
Personnel records belong to the county, we could leave out all that middle part, and say.
No, they need to know where that can get their reference.
Okay, so that, the point of this, this.
Is to let them know where they can find their.
Know where the. All right.
And if they go to the elected official, official's office, and they're using V O C C department, because some, some elected official's offices may be using V O C C H R at the moment, but they may in the future, or maybe they are now, and they're not in the future, I mean, that's a moving dynamic. But the elected official's office is going to know where that is, so it's ultimately the responsibility of the elected official to make sure that they, those records are maintained somewhere. It's either in their office or.
The part of, so, right, the importance of how these things are worded, folks, your elected officials on the hook. You can say it's in somebody, it's in somebody else's office, is in my division, as when, at the end of the day, when the lawsuit comes, the elected official's on the hook.
They have to make sure that they're kept, so that's why if it says personal records, of all county employees shall be kept by each elected official's office or each elected official. I mean, that, it's their responsibility.
And the elected official can designate who's the one that's the keeper of the records, that's all within their power, they can, they can do what Hannah does and have her own files, her own office, where she can say, hey, I have her H R, the H R files are gonna be in her office. Either way, at the end of the day, the elected official is, no matter how we word this, it's never going to take the liability off the.
Would it be accurate to say personal records of all county employees shall be kept under the direction of each elected official? If we don't like.
And, 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 yeah.
We don't like the word.
Remember, it has to, we, the point of this is to let them know that those, those records are in a centralized location.
Well, then we said, under the direction of the elected official, then we know. Go to my elected official first, and then if they tell me no, there's other employees.
When they, when people file first, my point is, where it's fair, it comes out of that, when it's heard, it comes out of that elected official's. Budget, correct?
But this really is just more along the lines of, hey, I come into work in the sleep, with my, my personnel review file, where is it gonna be kept? I need to write a copy of that.
Right.
Where can I get it?
I know that mine is in my department's H R, with my department's H R representative, cause that's how it's in my office. But I don't know how it works, you know, the other. The H R representative makes my office.
Lisa, what I hear you saying is, we have to say elected official.
That's fine. I would say we kept by each of the, you can say the, the, uh, the, uh, departments, when you say departments, I don't like, you know, I want it to be elected official's H R representative, or, you know, because if it's, if it's the elected official's H R department is the V O C C, I just like the elected official in there.
So, elected official H R representative.
That's fine, yeah, and I think that's.
Yeah, and then, and then we cover V O C C departments, we cover the internal workings of, and if a, a current elected official has their own H R representative, and then they change later to use V O C C, it would still be covered under that language.
Cause you leave it with just department's H R representatives, so many county employees in this, even if, even if you guys have your own H R, they're gonna think, oh, I'm gonna go to Karen, and Karen's gonna be like, I don't have your, I don't have that file. And then they're gonna be like, oh, who's got my, you know, and I don't want it to create, this is, to make it easy, so we don't have all those pesky questions, and I don't have lawyers saying, well, why does your policy manual say it's in the H R department, and it's not the H R, oh, that's not what that means. That means in the H R department, and the elected officials will just say that. I don't wanna get into arguments.
Right.
That's because of.
Like, what it had to mean.
Is there a motion on the table?
Yes.
Yeah.
What was the motion?
Um, to adopt these changes, which I'm okay, like I said, to leave an elected official, if there's a good reason for it, which sounds like very nice. Um, my intention is to make it clear to the employees who actually has the records, because it's not the elected official. Um, like, they should not be directed to go to the elected official to make a request for their personnel file, in my opinion, it should be the H R representative.
So, you're, you're saying, and I just wanna be clear, so it would say the elected official's H R representative, is that what you're saying?
Um, like in the first, the first instance?
Correct.
Yes. That could say by each elected official's H R representative in the first one, um.
And in the second.
Yeah, the same thing in the second one.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Motion. Thank you, next paragraph? Any issues, any problems? Yeah. We'll hear back after that, employees may request a copy. Anybody have problems with that?
No, I thought that that was included in my first motion to change that to H R representative.
Okay.
Did you have that as a motion, or?
I did, because you said the changes.
Yeah, so I had just restated the first one, so I'm good on that session.
The H R representative. If I see that up there on the board? No, to be clear, when you're eliminating H R representative for the, you're eliminating or elected official.
Yeah, and that, the motion that we just discussed.
So, we don't want it to say request to their elected official's H R representative, like we did at the first.
That's what I thought, this.
Kind of kind of put elected official.
Yeah, no, that's.
Sign.
That's. You agree to that?
So, I want to say.
To their, in the third paragraph, third line there, to their elected official. They'll do them one more paragraph. I think this is antiquated language, because no employment inquiries or verifications are to be released by the county clerk or by persons to receive authorization from the county clerk, that's old language. That's not what we.
Anything about what you used?
Yeah, now, we've changed that, but I believe that's still in the hand of, no, I don't think people abide by.
Yeah, the county clerk, obviously, is keeping the records of the clerk, that he's elected official.
Yeah, that wouldn't apply.
Right.
In, in our specific instance.
Right, so.
So, can we just omit that altogether? That it's not necessarily applicable to each department?
I knew it's on it would apply, this is just, it's even a block, is it applicable or no?
Right.
I didn't think. But I learned it to you all this time.
Well, I'll make a motion to eliminate that line.
Right.
Yeah.
Is there a second? Did you second?
Yes.
Is there a discussion? What do you want more?
That line on the front statute, no employment inquiries or verifications are. That entire one, we're just seconding.
Yeah.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We both. All right. This is fun, isn't it? It's important.
I'm just saying this.
I'm joking, all right, let's go, move on. You know what, we're one ninth of the ways. All right. I, uh, would like to pull up five twenty-two and eight twenty-two. Employment classifications.
That part on the, on the left side, the kind of gray highlighted, it will bubble out through to the right. I just didn't know what that meant. What is it?
What's it, how then, for somebody who?
Well, I, and that's why I'm just telling you what it is, that was my question, I don't know what, have no vested property interest in retaining employment. I didn't know what that meant, so I didn't, what is, what is vested property interest mean?
It's a legal.
It's a legal terminology, terminology for contract for employment. You have a, if you have a contract for employment, and I sign and say, you hire me as your attorney, and you hire me as a partner, and you hired me for a term period, that is a vested property interest, right? I, I, you're not creating, boy, you're a property. Your job is a vested property interest, if you have a contract. But what we're trying to say throughout this entire thing is, this manual, none, you are at will, there is nothing that creates a vested property interest in retaining your job.
Would you recommend that legal terminology for somebody who's just reading this, cause everybody would probably come up with the same question.
This goes back to lineage and potential.
C Y N.
In the future, that absolutely should be there.
Okay, all employee, yeah, all employees work at the pleasure of the elected officer and have no vested property interest in retaining employees.
Should it be there under hiring and under termination?
We did, we said under the hiring, we did, this is where it's the most, like, yeah, it's always, it re- it reiterated.
Employment constitution.
The first one, in the first one, we said they serve at will, uh, in the pleasure of the elected official.
It's just.
This is just a founding. And that's for the higher, that's for the hires. Where we're gonna have litigation is the ones that are already working.
And that needs to be here, we just.
Well, if you wanna take that out, you have to do.
Section.
I mean, if the time that follows creates a contract. They can.
Kennedy, one good thing.
It can be anywhere else, it can be someplace else, other than like compensation. But these are employment classifications. And every instance. Where you really see the difference is in state, states, government, they do have classified employees that do have a protected property interest. And cannot be fired without going through a whole administrative.
The county does too.
Um, under. Not, not, that's, that's on. Just vested where you can't be fired.
Sure.
At will.
After five years.
Sure.
Title nineteen, section five forty-seven, per county is a five hundred thousand or more.
Creates vested employee.
Yeah, it's probably in there somewhere.
It's not.
It was, so I don't know where.
Yeah.
It needs to be in.
Yeah, it's title nineteen, section five forty-seven, so counties that are five hundred thousand or greater. Um, basically, it's, it's worded something like, so the sheriff and his, and their, what they call chief deputy, which in our case means the undersheriff. Serve at will, but anybody else who wants to serve five year probationary period, uh, have just cause attached.
And then statutory.
Yes.
As part of yours. Is it statutory required for it?
It's, it's specifically.
It's the big two sheriffs.
Yes, it's nineteen five forty-seven.
Okay, so that needs to be included in there.
So is the right place for that to be in employee, employment separation?
It needs to be everywhere it can be in this thing.
I know, I know the, the hundred and seventy-five. I know it was at the top, I know it was throughout, but I know it was at the top under the, under the at will clause, I remember it being in there specifically. Yeah, the only two that, well, Cleveland County they qualify now, but at the time it was just us, Tulsa County that.
No, you're, I'm, I'm kidding, Erin, you can put it one place and one place only and choose, or you can put it throughout. I'm just saying, I want to one hundred percent iterate, you're at will, you're at will, you're at will, I want these employees to know they have no guarantee of employment, don't even try, you're at will, you're at will.
Yeah.
And the thing is that they will read one section as we all do. Nobody ever wanted to read the, the hundred and sixteen policy manual, and just because we make this fifty, fifty pages now and cut it in half, they're still not gonna read the fifty pages.
But if you need it to defend it, you have to know that they signed an acknowledgement.
Right, that they read it, that's true, that is true.
So wherever you wanna. So I would just say like, if you have it in hiring and you have it in separation, like, do you think? That we do.
I mean, I, I can read it, so we can, you can hear it not loud, if you need, if you need a free type of wording, but it says. The sheriff shall be responsible for the official acts of the undersheriff and deputy sheriffs and may revoke such appointments at the pleasure of the sheriff. Provided however, for counties with a population of five hundred thousand or more persons, according to the latest census, with the exception of chief deputies and undersheriffs. All deputy sheriffs and detention officers shall serve a five year probationary period under which the deputy sheriff or detention officer shall be considered an at will employee. After the five year probationary period, such deputy sheriff or detention officer shall not be discharged except for just cause. Um, the sheriff or undersheriff may, in writing, you know, depugue certain persons to do particular actions.
So we're gonna have to add another category or?
Cause that's all it reads in this.
Current handbook. That'd be kind of some of the thing.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay, that just needs to be probably added in there, I guess not.
Yeah.
Isn't it, is the good thing there, non-exempt law enforcement retention? And then you would.
If you get this structured, you could just. Next to all employees, if you put that paragraph that you're talking about below that paragraph, you can say all employees, comma, except those. Um, listed in the following paragraph, comma, work at the pleasure, and then the next paragraph. The exemption.
Is that new legislation?
No.
Does that, uh, Brandon S. Tell that and.
Yep, yep. Yeah, whoever's over five.
So. Underneath the first paragraph, we're gonna. We're gonna say all employees except those in the following paragraph. Blah, 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 blah.
Or can we just, yeah, can we just leave it in the employee separation and add it in there?
Move that paragraph, the all employees, to another place, is that what you're saying?
Um, so that's already stated, not verbatim, but. Says basically the same thing, can you, um, hold up that sorry, employment separation language and then adding in the. What we have in the current handbook to call the sheriff's office. In that section.
Erin, we're agreeing, but it, I'm just saying if you have that all employees with the pleasure of the elected official.
With the exception of.
Yada, 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 I think you need to have another with the exception of.
Sure.
That way.
Here's a verbiage solution perhaps, all employees except for those who are specifically. Exempt persons under title nineteen.
I wouldn't use exempt because.
It's not exempt. Except for those designated. In title nineteen, whatever, and then you have.
Except for those falling under the provision.
Uh, title, right, and then you hyperlink that. That would cover you.
Move the provision.
Of, and what was the title?
Title nineteen, section five forty-seven.
Mm-hmm.
I didn't just, uh.
That's, that's what it is.
Five forty-seven. And we're putting that.
Um, I made a note to pick it up.
Separation.
Without having to rehash those.
Um, I mean, I just. It should be like. That section markers.
And then you let the.
I can last.
Okay.
Right. Because if we do that, then we don't have.
Brandon, while you were out. Right now. And looking at. I think we've jumped ahead.
Well, I, Erin wanted to look at.
I understand.
See if.
I do. It's blowing the brain in.
Can we go back? So, so you like the note in our draft to add that, and so we're making sure.
Well, we can.
This, or you just.
Yeah, I'm just.
I definitely.
Okay, we're doing two or three things at once, not. Brandon?
I haven't been living around yet. I've clipped on a hyper.
After all employees, so up there in the red. Except those falling under the provisions in title nineteen five forty-seven.
Yeah.
Okay, you fine with that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for catching that.
Yeah.
Now, the debate at this point, I believe, or discussions. Is Erin is wanting to move that there under separation?
Mm-hmm, yeah, we're, yeah, I'm past all that, so this is already in the new draft. It says essentially the same thing. Um, we also have that under hiring, so I would be proposing just to have it in those two places or others.
Yeah, how does that matter to me? That's what was on there.
So Erin, you say those two places, can you define?
Um, so I would just move to remove the first sec, or the first sentence from employment classifications. With the caveat that we'll include it as well, as what, um, the sheriff's office needs under employment separation.
So. Uh, I'm not understanding. So you want this first paragraph?
The first sentence.
The first sentence.
Yeah, the first paragraph is the first sentence.
No, it's, it's.
Is there two?
There's two sentences.
There's three, actually, back, no, sorry, back on e- employment classifications. The first sentence.
You want that removed?
Yes.
Because?
Because it says it three times in the head. And Lisa said we can have it in hiring.
And it doesn't need to be here.
So you still.
Like the.
The official can do it by new year's. I see, yeah.
But it's a random place to have it, correct?
Yeah.
But to confirm it's already in, in hiring. Mm-hmm, it's under hiring and it's.
But.
Not in the exact same verbiage.
Yeah, and you just, you're, I think you're making the recommendation to have to comment and then those, um. Except those following under provisions of section nineteen five forty-seven.
Yeah, we have made a note when we get there to.
Go back and change.
To.
From, that you've already changed before, you'll need to go back and change that.
Yes. Under hiring? Is the, uh, just under separation.
There's a place where it says all employees are at will.
It's in the very. It doesn't say at will, it's just that it works at the pleasure of the.
Right, the pleasure of the elected official, it's the same thing.
That's only the one sentence.
Yeah, but I think you still need to end the comment, except those, because they're not.
Right. If that seems. Legal language, no vested property. Critical enough that we need to, in all of those, like you were talking about the afternoon.
We're. Ended in.
In the termination.
The termination.
I think it's termination is where. If you were going to only put it in one place. Uh, the best of property interest, the termination clause would be the best. That, that serves at the pleasure should be in the hiring stuff. And that if you were gonna, if you were wanting to. Pair it down, the best place for it would be in the.
Okay, so just to confirm, I currently have a motion from Erin to remove the first sentence from employment classification. That's all I've got.
And we're adding it later on. We're adding it previous, correct?
It's already in there.
Yeah. They're not specific, the, except those following under provisions of nineteen forty-seven, you're gonna add.
Yes, we're gonna have that. She said she was hoping that until.
That we're moving it. We've already said it once, but we're adding, except those following under provisions nineteen five forty-seven, correct?
Not right now.
When we move it or put it in the.
Yeah, but the motion is just to remove it from this section, when we get to the other section, we can.
Gotcha.
Deal with that then.
Right.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second?
Everybody get it, everybody understand?
Even if I didn't, I'm not gonna say I don't.
Restate it, please, please.
Okay, Erin's motion, and the end that meant is to remove the first sentence from employment classification section. Aye.
Aye.
I didn't talk for a minute, sorry to say.
Yeah, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In your, uh, motion case.
Thanks.
I feel like for, for. That's good, right?
I think we need, uh, I'll take a motion to break until three o'clock. Water break here. Then we'll come back here.
In here?
Yep.
Aye.
Motion, is there a second?
Paul?
Paul's second.
Oh, David's saying aye. Thank you.
Long day being.
Yeah. Your motion to reopen the meeting.
I will. Aye.
On the paper. All right. All right. Definitions of full-time, part-time, temporary, exit. Regular, non-exit, non-exit. Everybody have different definitions?
No, I do. Um, I also wanted to add a sentence to that. Employment classifications introduction. Then that employees may be classified as full-time or part-time as well as exempt, regular, non-exempt, or non-exempt law enforcement. Based on their salary and responsibilities. And department shall issue clear job descriptions to support the FLSA status of employees and then adding in the citation for the code. Where that comes from. And so motion to do.
So you're saying just a sentence to kind of break them, but what do you see as after anybody to happen?
Mm-hmm.
What is the follow?
What's above that section out through, Cassie?
It's the first paragraph under employment classification.
So you're setting up the definitions on the side of the United States. Is there a second?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Um. Lisa, do you agree with this? I think it's, it's not, we're going to crack this phone, that's fine.
Aye.
Any other?
And then review that about the definitions and I just need some edits to make them a little more clear. Um, removing examples of exempt employees, examples of non-exempt employees. And because as we know, it really depends on not the title of the position, but the responsibilities of the job. And to classify an employee.
Throw in a little bit too fast.
Sorry. Where would you like me to return?
The beginning.
Okay. And.
Yeah, maybe we start with the full-time employee.
You just, when you've inserted word generally, what is your definition generally?
And you also have your non-exempt law enforcement, full-time employees.
Is that what that next thing in verse two, though, one hundred and seventy-one?
If you've already had.
So that's one or the other.
If you already have that described in a separate paragraph, this particular one is referring to other than law enforcement.
Right.
So you don't need generally.
And statute totally, full-time employees in county statute totally, it's defined as a. Right, so you can't do less than that.
Okay, that's a link.
Okay, great, yeah, I'm good with removing generally. And really, that definition, I think, is just clean up recommendations. And throughout the handbook, I did remove like the spelled out. This is probably just personal preference, but when they spell out the number and then they put the number in parentheses, like you can't read the spelled out number. Um, I just think it isn't necessary, so just including the um, number in there rather than the word.
Is there something people read over and then? That's how statutes always do it. That's how contracts always do it.
I mean, you might always.
It's, it's, some of there's no.
No ambiguity.
No ambiguity, it's the same reason why even when you write a check that's like one hundred dollars and one hundred zero dollars, it's. You write the number and then words, it's just a.
Important to remember.
I mean, it's preferential, but I'm just saying that's the reason why.
Erin, you did say personal.
It is, yeah.
And I can't tell if there's a strike or not, that if you aren't removing the word forty, then you would remove the parentheses from a regular four.
There's.
Yeah, she's gonna strike.
No, this too.
Sorry.
No, I know, it's so small.
But Lisa, your recommendation on this is to leave, spell out forty and then parenthetically forty and then one hundred and seventy-one.
That is a personal preference, this is a policy manual, it's not a statute. If I were writing legislation, I would absolutely put it in because that's gonna be what's required anyway. By writing a contract, I would put it in, but this is y'all's policy manual, so this is a personal preference, it's not a legal requirement. I'm just telling you about the statutes and in business contract documents, that sounds.
On the one seventy-one, uh, um, so to ask, how might we handle that because um. It's really not a hundred and seventy-one, so that, it's actually a hundred and sixty-eight. And so the one seventy-one here doesn't, in my opinion, doesn't determine whether somebody is full-time or not. The one seventy-one, it comes from, I think either fact sheet seven or fact sheet eight, under uh, under the overtime compensation, so. You remember the, the big dog fight.
Right.
That three hours of gap time.
Right.
Let's not react to that, I have PTSD, but I mean, um, it's like the, the one sixty-eight, though, is what we consider a full-time comp.
If that's the case, then you need to change it here because like I said, everything that's in black, that's from this, I think this is. My section, this is from the act of. Section number art.
That's what we're at and then.
It may have.
It, it may have.
I added it because it didn't, I, I thought what I was doing here is kind of basing that our comp.
And really, that's kind of, really, this is more of a point of clarification, so in this section, I would think that. The indication of full-time would be the hundred and sixty-eight hours, but under the compensation policies, it would be a hundred and seventy-one where comp time is now.
And you cite this, and you can cite the federal statute, which would explain the discrepancy.
Okay.
Because for the county's purpose, what, like I said, if what you consider full-time is a hundred and sixty-eight hours, that's what that means, so.
Do we have anybody that works for the fire service that's worked for county?
No.
So the two twelve doesn't apply, okay. So you added language that laid out the different classifications, right?
Um, yeah, so there was already some language in there.
Right, but.
And I um, kind of tweaked it.
Can you go up, see, so, see that?
Oh, in.
Yeah, so, eh, my recommendation here, you got full-time employee and then you got generally works, I think it would be an individual that works forty hours. Wouldn't it be good to have full-time employee and then have a separate one that is full-time employee, law enforcement, non-exempt, so all of your. Your classifications that you put up there in the green, you have a section for that below.
So it'd be a, that would be bad.
So full-time, regular employee, full-time.
Full-time, regular.
Yes. Hannah, do, do your people fall under one of those two categories, like would you. Non-exempt law enforcement and detention?
Yes.
Or, or do you want juvenile specifically outlined?
Well, assuming law enforcement detention is the two oh seven K, one sixty-eight.
Okay, I was gonna, so you use the two oh seven K.
Yeah, or either two oh seven K, one sixty-eight, or seven day, full-time.
Yeah, so it would be the same for you.
Yeah, we marry yours.
Okay, so I think you have a full-time employee, regular and then, or whatever, and then full-time employee.
Law enforcement.
Ah, not without a fairness, I mean. Non-exempt.
There is, if you scroll down. Non-exempt law enforcement and detention.
I see if there's any more to.
Okay, yeah, you've got, since you have that down below, the non-exempt law enforcement and detention employees, then above, when you got full-time employee. You wouldn't need the, or the one seventy-one language, you just, an individual that works forty hours. Right, yeah.
It changes.
So under non-exempt, instead of the law enforcement detention, it's one six, hundred and sixty-eight.
Yeah.
That, that's how, yeah. Because one seventy-one just doesn't really make sense from a schedule perspective, then, then you got people working eight point zero four seven hours per day. It, it just mathematically comes out funky.
One seventy-one is just that full-time threshold.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's weird in the, I mean, yeah, it, it's just, it's just weird, the way, the way the law enforcement is set up.
But for a full-time employee, the, those of us who aren't in law enforcement.
Still forty hours.
Still forty.
Yeah, yeah.
Is it defined by a monthly total?
It's, 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 yeah, so it's Sunday at midnight to Saturday at midnight, or what if it's not? Yeah.
But, no, I'm saying a total number.
No, it's not, just forty hours a week.
So we can, that person.
Yeah, so, so the, to kind of get, to get a little bit of description, so, uh, under the forty hour week, it's, it's under the two oh seven A. Section of, of the guidelines of the FLSA, so what, when the one sixty-eight falls under two oh seven K. And so the intent behind that was, um, and the reason there's that weird gap with them, that one sixty to one seventy-one is because you, we schedule our people to work. You know, let's say fourteen shifts of twelve hours, that's a hundred and sixty-eight hours, but it's pretty common that, like somebody like, I don't mean this, it's like this. It could be common for somebody like that sits around this table, that when the clock strikes five, it's pretty easy for you to get up out of your chair and go home. Whereas like a cop on the road or a firefighter probably can't do that, they might still, I mean, they can't, you know, if you got a deputy, somebody says, sorry, it's five o'clock, I, you know, report it tomorrow.
Yeah.
So, so the idea there was, is to give that person the ability to kind of flex that timeout over a longer period of, of, of time, so if they work a little bit long here. The boss can say, hey, just come in tomorrow a little bit later to, to offset that, those, those hours, to try to avoid you going into that comp time threshold. But if they do, then the comp time threshold is a hundred and seventy-one, not a hundred and sixty-eight. It's, it's kind of, it's kind of funky, but that, that was the original intent, the way I understand that, that K exemption in, in federal law.
Right. No, I, I get it, nice to less. All right, so. Definition of full-time employees and individual who, do we wanna do silver channel or?
No. Yeah, I'll just, what Cody said, just do full-time employee, individual, or full-time regular employee, an individual who works forty hours per week.
Comment that such employees are eligible.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Now, we wanna get more specific and say, uh, an individual who works forty hours per week. Is considered a full-time employee and is eligible for benefits on the first pay period after sixty days.
I think that's written in somewhere else.
Yes.
Yeah, 'cause some of your. Oh, that's true, that's true.
Like overtime or comp time are.
Okay.
So you wanna restate that all in?
Yeah, on that motion to say, uh, an individual who works forty hours per week. Is considered a full-time employee and is eligible for benefits.
Okay, is there a second?
I'm gonna use the word regular to distinguish between.
Yes, and use the word regular employee, and I would keep a whole forty and in parentheses forty.
I wanna just say that that will make that not match up with the rest of the five into the list. Now, the, the first one, full-time employee, an individual who works forty hours will be part-time, an individual who works fewer than forty hours will be temporary, an individual who's a. And so they're all kind of set up that way, so if we change that first one, an individual who works forty hours per week is considered a full-time employee. Then we're probably gonna need to add that extra wording to all of them to make them the same. In my opinion, it seems like it'll not all match.
Yeah, maybe we obviously.
So, I don't know, can you say is considered, because it's already, that's the.
Why, why would we have to add that to the part-time section in the?
Just to be consistent?
It will just, 'cause the.
That they wouldn't work forty hours a week.
No, I'm saying the last part about is considered a. You know, like.
Oh, I see the sense.
If we're gonna change the first one by adding a first.
Is, yeah, is there anything wrong with just having the edit to this be the? Is, yeah, is there anything wrong with just having the edit to this be the ones from one seventy one to one sixty eight and?
Take that out.
He does.
Yeah.
And then add regular, full time, regular employee, that's what I'm talking about.
All the way, I'll bring it before, just that's an individual who works forty hours per week or a minimum of one seventy one hours, which I think we just leave it like that, subchanges to the one seventy one.
Change to one sixty eight, that's correct, right?
What, so?
No. No, that's that's in, that's just defining what the full time employees, and and if they're one sixty eight, twenty eight day cycle, or if you, and then this is hours, which is one sixty eight instead of one seventy one.
You have regularly down.
You take this.
No, you leave that in.
It's full time and part time and temporary, and then it's exempt, regular, non exempt.
Why are you doing that here?
Because I think isn't that what the, well.
There's two different classifications, you're either full time, part time, or temporary, and you're exempt, non exempt, non exempt, or just longer.
Yeah, but it's talking about classifications, I mean, because Brandy doesn't qualify at work, a hundred sixty eight hours, so.
You sure?
Four days off.
I'm trying to get used to that.
Thank you.
I don't care, I I'm like, you know, this is word salad, I'm like, you know.
Okay, so we've got full time, part time, temporary. You have exempt and non exempt, well, non exempt, it's a regular, that's the only place where that word regular shows up. Is there a reason why that one?
Cause I didn't notice forty hour.
That's the very hard question.
That's why I was suggesting, in the the full time law enforcement, then regular, that way your your full time and your part time are consistent with each other throughout the process.
One was trying, one was trying just to define full time employee, and one was trying to define what's considered non exempt, is regular and non exempt. Because there's, the, this is, this is where it gets, I know that this is where it gets in the weeds, folks, but for the Fair Labor Standard Act, which is where the law, that there is a difference between exempt and non exempt employees. And so that's a different classification, you can be a regular full time employee, but maybe you are exempt rather than non exempt, this is, this is just an action for definition. They are different things, but you can, like I said, if you want.
Okay, I don't think I answered my question, so, there's a difference between a regular, non exempt, and a non exempt law enforcement.
Yes, they're treated differently.
Only time would be regular and law enforcement need to come into play? Does that happen with any of these other categories besides the non exempt?
Like such a, like a full time.
That's what I'm just.
So. I'll face.
Yeah. Okay.
Because sadly, I I would just say, non exempt and, uh, non exempt and exempt classification is just a creature of.
Yeah.
Standards.
Yeah.
Okay. And so like, that's the verbiage, like I said, I understand it's such weird, and it seems like it's all lit, and it probably is, but the only reason it's in there is because the federal law is making that classification that we probably would not make if we were in half.
I mean, if this is the only time when regular and law enforcement comes into play is with non exempt employees, I think I would probably just leave it, like, well, but, yeah, I mean, I guess that's what makes sense.
But, Cody, to your point, if you wanted to just go. Regular, non exempt, these two, either take these two paragraphs out or lose two and take. Out. Okay, I was just trying to break it down. I mean, this makes me, no. This with non exempt.
He came up.
Get us that one thing.
All right.
Did you, but I can watch it while I'm at attention first.
Okay.
So is there any issue with keeping it the way that it is?
I need to change it to the one sixty eight, so I'll need to change the minimum, so keep everything the same, except change one seventy one to one sixty eight.
Okay, there are some months that a hundred and sixty hours are not.
Doesn't apply.
Yeah, because there are some months that have a hundred and sixty hours, and there are some months that have a hundred and seventy eight hours. Cause it's on a twenty eighty, twenty eighty divided by the twelve, it's a minimum of one seventy three point three three that you get paid, but when you work a hundred and sixty hours, you still get paid at one seventy three point three. Yeah, I believe July when it's a hundred and eighty four. Yeah. July. So that needs to be taken. Mm-hmm, or a minimum of a hundred and sixty hours.
Or do you say an average, and like you said, twenty eighty average?
Works a minimum of a hundred and sixty.
Okay.
I'll look.
That's, that's statute.
The forty hours a week is statutory for county employees, then you have.
So, yeah, what you're saying about the the some months maybe, you know. But, I mean, to qualify people for full time.
It is forty.
Forty hours by statute, is what I understand.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if you just put forty hours here, I think so, yeah.
We don't have to total the entire month equals certain number, cause it's different every month, February's different.
So then we're saying strike a minimum of a hundred and seventy one hours and twenty eight day, twenty eight day pay cycle.
I thought we said that a long time ago.
Well, I don't, you know.
Never voted.
Okay.
I'll be the third person to try to make a motion.
This paragraph is just to try to identify duties for time employees.
Right. Associate to an individual who works forty hours per week with the exception of law, non exempt law enforcement.
I don't think non exempt law enforcement should be in there because. Yeah, it's a two paragraph, and we can move it up. Right, but if you just say full time employees work forty hours, then that, when you're a non exempt law enforcement employee, you're reading that, it's not accurate. Cause you're still a full time employee. I guess I would defer to our law enforcement people to decide what makes sense, I mean, make your determination.
But, man, I don't understand what, cause it's already in another place down below, right?
Yes.
Uh, that's what's confusing to me, is why is it in two places? What are we trying to do?
So you're either full time or part time, and then you're either exempt, non exempt, or law enforcement.
Right. But like, so we, pass, we scrolled on one of those?
Um, yeah.
Oh, that's me, sorry, non exempt.
So like, so what's the purpose of that down there, the non exempt law enforcement and detention, so we're just trying to so there, we're trying to distinguish between exempt and non exempt?
Yeah. The different classification.
Right, but there's no exempt section for law enforcement, or, I mean.
That would just be regular exempt, there's just the one, like, your exempt employees in the sheriff's office are just exempt.
Brandon, that's where I was getting about labeling it regular, full time, regular employee and full time. Non exempt. Law enforcement and detention employees, that way it's the same up there for your full time as what you have your, um, for your non exempt below. But, what what's above the regular and non exempt?
And that goes to where you get all the time.
Right.
So there's your difference. There's part time and full time, and then there's exempt and there's non exempts, and you can have a part time exempt, and you can have a part time non exempt. One of them earns overtime, and one of them earns a salary. Um, but there are different kinds of, like I said, when they, when I say job classifications, I know that that maybe it need to have a part A and a part B, I don't know how, but it, obviously, here's the problem. This is not working because if people in this room can't understand what this is, then clearly Jim in District Three who drives a dozer with a high school G E D is not going to.
Well, right, so what I, I I said exemptary, but I meant non exempt, so why do we have them separated out here then? Like, why not just combine them down here because of their non exempt, and you said, I'm saying we've got to combine them, but full time, combine for the non exempt to determine overtime status.
You can split them at the top if you want, but they're two separate things, but you can split them at the top if you wanted to.
Right, so the, at the top, it's not talking about full time exempt, that's what I was kind of thinking, it's just full time. Because there's a section right there that says exempt employees above the non exempt. Right. I think it's. No, I, using the way everything is.
Your exemption's really, I mean, it goes in your compensation, but your exemption is when you talk about overtime. It doesn't talk about full time or part time, your exemption really doesn't have anything to do with being full time or part time.
Right.
Some of, some of temporary, some of the exemptions to, yes, wherever you talk about overtime, if there's a place.
Which there, there's compensation policies somewhere in this.
That's, that's where we are.
Right.
Just kidding.
Let's, uh.
I bet, I bet we're specific, the classification.
This is fun. In a ring.
What about you, break?
Yeah, that's where.
Can I make one more suggestion? What if it read, an individual who works forty hours per week or up to one hundred and seventy one hours in the twenty eight day pay cycle if subject to whatever the F L S A.
Cause they have ones that do one sixty.
So it would be up to, would be like your regular full time, like, you could say your regular full time was up to a hundred and seventy one. Even though like you're saying, it doesn't usually calculate up to that, but it could, it could, before you would be eligible for overtime.
And it's about the minimum, it's not about the overtime threshold.
Right, and that's how.
It's a minimum one sixty eight, but then overtime kicks in at one seventy one.
Cause any, any seven day regular employee, all can work fifty hours a week, he can work up to fifty hours, but his salaries are forty dollars. Putting up to in there, that could be up to iron point out.
And it would create difficulty in defining.
It's weird.
That you do up to, and that's like, everybody who works. I, it's, it's a verbic thing, so this is an organizational thing, it sounds like. Because really, all I was intending to do is define when you're, what, for benefits purposes, when you're considered eligible for benefits and for overtime purposes, when you're considered eligible for overtime.
Yeah.
I guess that maybe you have a part A that says definition, you know, classifications of employees, I know that that's what that says, but then maybe another heading for the other, that says overtime eligibility.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's, and that's.
Be, then would it be correct to se- to be separated like that?
Yeah, and that's, so I think, I think. For benefits.
Yeah.
And then for overtime.
Right.
Yeah, and that's, that's kind of what I was getting at earlier, that was.
That's, this is what that, this is just like doing it all at once, but it, it can literally just be a part A and a part B.
Right.
Your classification and your overtime.
Yeah, and that's what I was kind of talking about earlier, is that the separation of the two, yeah, one sixty eight is a in a, yeah, I I get it, it's in terms of what amount you get benefits or not, one seventy one is where the full time and a half comes in, but not.
Um, I'd like for us to break this off, close out, uh, well, I think we need to continue this meeting. But, uh, we'll let you know when we're done. So we're gonna recess, and can you look at the calendar real quick?
Uh, you can't recess.
I wasn't there. Thank you. I love you. We're gonna reset, and if you look at the calendar and tell us what days are available.
What are you, are you talking about? We can do this week or next week?
Next week.
Um.
Everybody look at your calendar.
Labor day.
Do we get up?
Cause I thought we worded this. Good special B E T.
I'd rather not, but yeah, yeah, please.
Thanks, I'm good.
You only get it ever. See how everybody else flashes.
That's right, that's what, that would fix the difference.
Were, you thinking for Tuesday-ish, Greg, or?
That's, that's, that's all it is.
A lot of it is to, to.
We've got B E T obviously at two, nine thirty on Tuesday.
Right, and I know.
And that's likely to be recess.
Till the afternoon.
So, okay.
And then Wednesday.
Same, so same time next Wednesday?
That, that, that would be.
Same time.
I can do any time I can kill on Wednesday. Five, two.
Can you say after two?
Next one's, next one's out.
Everybody make it next Wednesday.
No, she can't.
We're looking at Thursday.
Who's that?
Thing Aaron said.
Thursday.
Thursday afternoon's no good for me.
Thursday morning.
I, I can do that, I hope.
And we're talking the fourth?
Yeah.
Yeah, let's, uh, motion to.
Will you do anything on the rest of these agenda items, or?
Um, I can get with Aaron to get back on and then get.
We don't know.
Set the participation reset.
Right, those we do need to do, but as far as the others, they would just be no action.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we can make a motion for no action on number three through two hundred and seventy seven.
Brandon, that will be first.
Okay, is that the appropriate motion, three through? Okay, um.
Brandon Holmes, no action.
We, we didn't talk about the cover, we didn't talk about T twenty eight, but yeah, yeah, I like the motion.
Do you like this?
Yeah, we like.
Okay, so we got a motion from Brandon for no action for three through fifty eight.
Is there a second? Hold on, paper say it.
Right, and then you've got, um, so some participation and more comment for them.
No comment.
No.
No comment.
I just wanna thank everyone, Cody, I didn't mean to hurt you or insult you or cut you off.
I was just reading the future.
Hannah, thank you for coming down, Lisa, thank you.
We're fine.
Guys, this is not easy, it's pretty obvious, but we're gonna get to it, and you just gotta bring our page. Is that anything going to that? Motion to adjourn?
Some of.
Second.
Hold on, paper say it.
All right. Are we?